I'd like to call to order the January 9th meeting of the Shelby Township Planning Commission, and I'll ask the Secretary to call the room, please.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Meredith?
Here.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Here.
Ms. Casali is absent this evening. Mr. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Oppone is absent. Mr. Luray?
Here.
Chairman Moffett, we have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Next item, or first item, is approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, approval of the minutes from the December 12th meeting.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Mr. Turner, do you want to recuse yourself?
I wasn't there, so maybe I shouldn't vote. I can do that.
Fair enough. Acknowledging that, if there are no comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. This evening, we have four items, the first being site plan number 18-26, special land use number five. And I'm going to ask Mr. Snyder to, what is the proper pronunciation of your client's first name?
I call him Michael. I don't know, I don't speak Sicilian, so I don't know the proper, proper-
You know, it's up here fairly frequently, seeing he's been doing business in this-
McGelly?
McGelly?
McGelly, yes. Or something close to that. But I call him Mr. LaChirco, is what I call him.
It's happened again seven, eight times a year, so I figure, you know, I should probably figure his name out at some point, if it's proper. LaChirco?
Yes.
For Shelby Park North Phase Two. I see his representative, he's here, give your name and address, and what are you requesting of this body?
Yes, Pete Snyder, Urban Land Consultants, 8800 23 Mile Road, Shelby Township, Michigan, representing the petitioner, Michael LaChirco. I'm here requesting a revised site plan for a project known as Shelby Park Manor North Phase Two. It is, as the Chairman pointed out earlier today, it is a project that has been in front of you more than once. The current, and I do believe at this point, he is ready to start pushing forward with the engineering. He already has indicated that I needed to get started already. So the revisions to the site plan at this point are driven by really just one thing. About in Shelby Park Manor North Phase One, when he added the, he added a covered walkway and a double-covered carport parking in the rear of Building Three, and it turned out to be very, very popular with the residents, so he added it to Buildings Four and Five. I was here for site plan revisions for those. And then for Shelby Park Manor North, he's very definitely committed to the same concept here. So the four buildings remain the identical footprint. They're actually, the final architectural plans, though, they are actually five units each, less in density. So the building footprint is the same, but instead of having an 85-unit building, they are 80-unit buildings. So the density went down, and there's a picture up there. I'm not going to try to steer around my drawing, because it locked up your computer a couple of times, so I'm just going to let it be on the screen. And so the rear carports, the buildings are down to 80 units, and then he also would like a second trash compactor building. That's an enclosed building that the trash compactor is inside. It'll be identical visually to what's in Shelby Park Manor North Phase One. So there's a couple other, I guess, revisions, sort of ancillary to moving stuff around and making the carports work, but it's all on the site plan. And I am certainly available for any questions. I don't think we need to make this any longer or more durable than it needs to be. It's, from my standpoint, it's a different-looking layout, but it's the same-looking project. So if you have any questions, I'm available.
Great, thank you. To the planner for-
Thank you, Chairman. I don't have any objections to the proposed revisions of the plan. I think the biggest asset to this is the reduction of 20 units in this whole development. Again, variances were granted for this back in 2018. They would still apply in this case, so I don't have any objections to the extension of the special land use.
Okay. No, no, so no additional variances would be needed?
No.
We've got no complaints for the trash compactor, the initial unit?
No. Matter of fact, I have been speaking to a resident that's in that immediate area, and I just wanted to commend Mr. Snyder and the applicant in adding additional landscaping along the front. So they did add a substantial amount of landscaping along the entrance there.
Okay, thank you. To the board, are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Turner.
I move to recommend approval to the Township Board for the proposed modifications to site plan number 18-26, SLU 5, Michael LaChirco, Shelby Park Manor North Phase Two, vacant parcel number 23-07-05-301-017, located north of 25 Mile Road, east of Shelby Road, for senior citizen housing. The modification approval is subject to the submission of seven sets of final site plans, addressing all Planning Commission site plan and engineering review comments.
Support. Moved by Turner, support by Luray. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Luray?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Chair of the House, yes.
Thank you, sir.
Please, for the final time, good luck.
Aye. I hope so, too.
All right. Next item is site plan number 22-41, Richard Detkowski for JLR Group.
Hi, I'm Larry Nichols with Armstrong Miller &amp; Nichols from East China, Michigan, and I'm representing Mr.-
Can I get your address, please?
5412 Point Drive, East China, Michigan.
Okay.
Representing Rocky Tucker and Tucker Induction Systems on Rizzo Drive. He wants to put an addition on there. It's going to be a steel building off the back of the existing masonry structure there, masonry and steel structure. The present site is basically all concrete. The whole site is concrete, except for the front yard that faces Rizzo Drive. We're just putting on the addition out in the back and hope that we could put that addition out without hardly any problems at all. You have the notes from the planner there about the parking. We found room on that, on the existing site to add 10 more spaces. I've highlighted them in that light pink on my drawing. I know you can't see it from up there, but there is room for another 10 spaces without reconfiguring or deleting from the site. We certainly can answer all the other questions that they made on here as far as the fire protection and screening of the equipment on the roof and storage of outside materials. There will be none of that, so.
Okay.
Any questions?
Okay. To the planner, to-
Yes, thank you, Chairman. As Mr. Nichols stated, they're looking for an addition onto an existing industrial site there. It's a 4,500 square foot warehousing addition. There's overhead doors to allow for trucks to access the site for the products stored inside. Brief history of the site, this building was constructed in 1995. There was an addition put on in 1996 for additional shop area and office area. Currently, there's about 1,300, or 13,000 square feet of shop area and almost 4,000 square feet of office area. Tucker Induction Systems is the current owner, or current tenant of record, and they've been the tenants without incident with the township for a number of years. This site is zoned light manufacturing, and all these surrounding properties are also zoned light manufacturing with similar industrial-type uses to Tucker Induction Systems. With that, the proposal they're looking to add on to this site is well within the permitted uses for that zoning district. Warehousing, transportation, distribution are all permitted uses within that zoning district. So there's no issue with the use, as they're proposing, the continuation of the use. There are a few site plan comments I'd like to go over. In order to complete the application, we'll need proof of ownership for the property, whether that's a warranty deed or quitclaim deed or some other identification.
We brought a deed with us tonight.
Excellent. And then also, the benchmarks on the site plan, what we've shown in relation to the site, that's pretty simple to add on there. You also mentioned that you would like to do steel as the facade material for the siding there, that will require Planning Commission approval. And I will say, by the zoning ordinance, we restrict steel facade materials to the upper portions of the building, above what is considered the entrance, so above the first floor, basically. Besides that, you discussed the parking spot reduction. So there were 10 spots that were deficient on the site plan that would have required a variance. Now, if you're able to add 10 spots in the site, that would satisfy that requirement. However, it looked like on that site plan that you did have some parallel parking noted there. We don't allow parallel parking in the township. I have to see exactly how those are laid out.
There was, when I revised it, I revised it with one parallel parking, oh, two, now that I think about it, two parallel parking spots.
So those won't be able to count toward the total parking requirement. Besides that, we'll need dimensions for the handicap-accessible parking spaces. A couple of our departments mentioned the stormwater plan for the site. Got the stormwater routed underneath the addition there. That's going to have to be relocated, so that way it's not underneath the addition. That's a comment from the engineers, the Township Engineers, AW, the Department of Public Works, and the Building Department. So that ought to be reconfigured.
That's all handled with engineering, right?
Yes. Besides that, you touched on the outdoor storage and the roof-mounted equipment. The photometric plan that was submitted will have to show that it's adherent to all the site lighting requirements of the ordinance, which are laid out pretty clearly in our zoning ordinance. Besides that, the rest of the comments can be fairly satisfied during a building and engineering review of the project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. To the board, any questions or comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Turner.
I'd like to talk about the makeup, the composition of this addition that you're building. Mr. Fiori mentioned that the ordinance calls for steel at the top, brick at the bottom, or block at the bottom.
Mm-hmm.
What you propose looks like a storage shed on the back of the building. It does not look very good.
Sorry, now you can hear me, right? Sorry about that. Let me start again. The ordinance, as Mr. Fiori said, talks about the top of the building being the metal siding and the bottom being block or brick or whatever. You're proposing completely-
Steel.
Yeah. I'm not in favor, and I think it looks kind of cheap. It looks like an afterthought. I know it's built after the initial building, but I think this is, I would prefer that you go with the ordinance where you have the block in the bottom and you keep the steel siding to the top, just like the other building that's a little bit north of where you're at. So that's my feeling. I don't know if other commissioners concur, but that's my position on that.
Yeah. I would agree with you, Mr. Turner. And frankly, rather than just saying, okay, sort of build it roughly, I mean, this seems far enough away from what we require is that, frankly, I'd like to see something, I'd like to see an elevation resubmitted, and would maybe encourage one of my colleagues here maybe to table this, and we can get you on the next agenda, but I need, I'd like to see something that, because it does, it's not a small little-
No.
It's, you know, it's-
So the only elevation that shows to the street is the east elevation, which is about 30 foot of the building.
So are you saying you don't want to make the change?
No, we'll make changes.
Okay, I appreciate that.
All right. So, any other comments?
Changes.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to table site plan number 22-41 for Richard Detkowski with JLR Group, on behalf of Tucker Induction System, to give the applicant an opportunity to come forth with another elevation, addressing the concerns raised by the Planning Commission.
Support. Moved by Turner, support by Meredith. Any questions on the motion? Hearing done. Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Luray?
Yes.
And the Chair of the House, yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Just ask a word of advice. If I come back one parking spot short, is that going to cause me to go to ZBA?
I believe, yes. I don't think, this body doesn't have the-
Pardon?
This body doesn't have the authority to, yeah, so.
Okay.
Next item, site plan number 22-45, Tommy Ayoub, 49799 Decker Road.
Hi, I'm Mr. Ayoub. Have you guys got-
Your address.
Oh, 49799 Decker Drive.
Tell you what, why don't you lower that mic just a little bit, or at least make sure you speak into it.
49799 Decker Drive, Decker Road.
Okay. What are you requesting of this body?
That you guys allow me to upgrade the power to my home, because DT is not allowing me to, not allowing to re-energize the home unless the upgrade is made. When plans were originally submitted to get the power to upgrade a few years ago, it required a CT cabinet to be installed, and that was never done. And the building, the building inspector's not allowing me to do this upgrade.
Why is this upgrade necessary?
To be able to continue with my caregiver grow in the basement.
For what?
For a caregiver grow in my basement. Yes.
Okay. Tell you what, I'm going to, I'm going to ask our planner to offer sort of her review, and then there are a couple of township employees that are going to come up and comment as well as to why these issues exist.
Okay, thank you, Chairman.
Yeah, I, there's not a whole lot I can do about that. If you want to yell at the guys in the counter, in the cubby.
Thank you, Chairman.
It's bulletproof, though, be warned.
So the situation here is Mr. Ayoub is looking to expand on a Class B non-conforming use. He has a grow operation, MMA caregiver's license in his home. This was done prior to the township enacting our ordinance. So he would be a legal non-conforming in this situation, Class B, and he is looking to expand on this. Well, our Class B non-conforming use is there's no expansion allowed on that, and that's why he is here in front of the Planning Commission, asking for this request, because he's asking for an increase in amperage to support his business because of expansion on his business. But he has since received, prior to our enactment of the medical marijuana ordinance, he received approval for his MMA. But he cannot expand on it at this point, and that's, again, that's why he is here. So we have the electrical engineers from the township here to speak on that as well. So I'll have them come up and they can give their story on this whole operation.
Hello, everybody. My name is Daniel Lawrie. I work in the Building Department here in Shelby Township, and I am one of the electrical inspectors. And I'm here to answer any questions that you may have in reference to this. I can quickly touch on what Ms. Julia said in reference to the situation at this home. And of course, we also have the Fire Department back here as well, who could also chime in about the amount of times that they've been out to Tommy's home. So, do you want to start by asking me any questions?
Why don't you just give an overview from the department's perspective?
Okay, great. So, as Julia said, we have been out to the home multiple times. I know him by Tommy, so I hope that's okay. Tommy and I have met out on the home multiple different times. The power has been disconnected to the home, I believe, three times, due to multiple different reasons, primarily because of equipment failure on DTE's side, as well as on the portion connected to the home. DTE has come out. Tommy has actually paid out of his own pocket to have an additional transformer installed in his own yard to try to minimize any interruptions to any of the residents next to him. However, since having done that, the equipment has still come up being damaged. So the last time that we were out to Tommy's home, the township was very concerned about the level of power being used in the home. There is currently what we call a 320 amp service on the home, which DTE rates that service at 256 amps. Just for your basic knowledge, the majority of the homes in Shelby Township run off of a 200 amp service. We currently have a home that went in on Forrester Drive, that's 7,000 square feet, and that does have a 320 amp service. So it's quite a bit of power in reference to, but it is required for the type of cultivation that's being done at this residence. The last time we had a failure previous to this time, when the township was very concerned, as well as the Fire Department, in reference to property damage, potential damage to any of the residents nearby, their homes, that type of thing, because fires have happened, in reference to this type of a draw on equipment. We met with Tommy, and we discussed the fact that DTE does limit the amperage out of 320 amp meter enclosure to 256 amps. Tommy hired, I believe, an architect or electrical engineer to do what we call a low calculation study. So essentially, they take all the equipment in the home, and they find out how many watts, how many amps, they add it all up, they do special calculations, there's percentages, et cetera, et cetera. And what we did is we did, he upgraded some more energy-efficient equipment to try to lower that amperage, and so on and so forth. Our former chief electrical inspector, Larry Colgrove, who's now retired, he did approve the low calculation study, which showed that he would, Tommy would stay under 256 amps. I do have the blueprint that was submitted by Tommy, and on the blueprint, one of the ways that we were able to get under the, our 256 level, was to eliminate a good portion, I would say, it's a smart, it was like the nursery portion of, I think, the grow. So the lights in some of that equipment was taken out of that room, and that room was just put down as storage, so it's no longer being used for grow purposes. And as I said, they upgraded the equipment to some more energy-efficient equipment. So the township was under the understanding that we would easily be able to stay under the 256 amps, based on the fact that this information was submitted. He hired an architect, he went through and did all the low calculations. Since then, we have burned up the enclosure again, thus coming to where we're at now, to where DTE has told Tommy that we, they will not energize his home unless the grow is removed, or he's, the service is being increased to 400 amps. Now, just so you know, again, a 400 amp service, which is a CT cabinet, that is only good for 320 amps. So if we're already burning up equipment at 256 amps, which we've already said that we would stay under, I'm not really sure that even that would sustain what's happening there.
Okay, thank you. I guess to someone from the Fire Department, I think it's pretty clear as to what, you know, that there is a risk here.
Can we ask questions to-
Hang on a minute. I, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to hear, this isn't a public hearing, but I understand the neighbors, neighborhood concern. So I'll let a couple people come up and offer some comments, but let me work through this first.
Hi, Duane Staden, Fire Marshal, Shelby Township.
I'll need you to pull the, yeah.
Duane Staden, Shelby Township Fire Department, 6345 23 Mile. I would just ask, after reviewing what he's submitted, that you please deny this. This is a safety concern to not only the homeowner, it's a safety concern to the neighbors, as well as my guys, if they are called to fight a fire. We have been out there on a fire due to equipment failure in the past. It's, all I can say is this is a safety concern, and we would rather deny this.
Okay, great, thank you. Yeah, and I agree. Back when these, back when these non-conforming uses were allowed, you know, the township really hadn't worked through, it was, it was a new industry, you know, it was just allowed, and as it was allowed, while they figured out where they're supposed to be. So now these are supposed to be in a light manufacturing district, not in, and not in the neighborhood. Right. Now, I can understand, at a small level, that they do exist, not sure that I'm entirely happy that they exist, but that's, but to expand them and to grow, that's not, that wasn't the intent.
It's already set up to be able to go up to a 400 amp service, being that I have my own transformer, so I'm separate from my neighbors.
No, it seems, it's clear by the experts within the township, one, that our system doesn't allow for it, and it creates a health and safety risk for the neighbors in your community. So, you know, I'm almost, well, there is process, and everyone has to go through a process, but this seems, this request just seems ludicrous to me. So, to the board, are there any questions?
Mr. Chairman, like you, I'm not an expert, but however, when I see the Fire Marshal coming up explaining that this is a health hazard, safety hazard, not just for you, for other residents, and for the firefighters who may be called out to the house, I agree with you. I think this is a ludicrous request. This is a non-conforming use. I believe if your business is growing, it should be more appropriately located in a commercial or an industrial spot, not in a residential home. And if you, it just is clear that you need more power, and more power, and more power, that the system can't support it, you're already burning up the equipment as it is now. So I am not in favor of this right now at all, period.
You've grown your businesses, and that's, I guess, good for you, but that means it's time for you to then find an adequate spot. There are plenty of spots within the township, if you, if you want to stay within the township. If you want to talk to our Planning and Economic Development Office, I'm sure they can point you in the right direction to find it. But what you're asking, and again, you know, I see, and this is probably just a representative of a much larger community in this, and you're not the only one, you know, there are other folks that are, that have, I hate to say, have taken advantage of, you know, the, our slow, well, you know, the process to, for us to get to a proper ordinance, that are in, are operating businesses where they shouldn't. But that's how it was, it was legal at that time.
Yeah.
But now, and if you want to, if you want to operate within the context, confront, the parameters of what was initially allowed, there's nothing we can do to stop that, but we're not going to allow for it.
The issue I'm having is DT is not re-energizing the home unless it goes up to a 400 or down to a 200.
Well, the problem is, because then you're, you're, well, it's, that's not safe, it's not safe, it's not safe for the community from multiple levels, and so I don't know how we would expand it to allow for that. Anyone else wish to comment? Now, anyone is willing to, but, you know, I think you kind of get where this is going. But if you guys want to come up and ask a question, you're welcome to. Because this may be, you know, again, you probably don't, okay. All right. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Turner.
I move to deny the Class A non-conforming use application for Tommy Ayoub and Christopher Ayoub, 49799 Decker Drive, based on the following. One, the requested expansion of the non-conforming use will negatively impact the abutting land uses. Two, the requested expansion of the non-conforming use will be contrary to public health, safety, and welfare, and the spirit and intent of this ordinance. Three, the use is likely to significantly depress the value of nearby properties.
Support. By Mr. Snyder?
Yeah.
Okay. Before I call the question, I'll ask the planner, if she had any final comments.
Well, you covered it all. You're good.
All right, thanks. If there are no other questions on the motion, Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Luray?
Yes.
And Chair of the House, yes. Okay, thank you. Next item is a public hearing, and so I'll ask the Secretary to-
Charter Township of Shelby, notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Planning Commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, Macomb County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of the following special conditioning rezoning and site plan. Applicant Catherine Lochner for Happy Tales Learning Center for Dogs, 49722 Tottenham Lane, Macomb, Michigan, 48044. Propose use conditional rezoning from C1 local retail business to C2 linear retail business and site plan. Location 51209 Mound Road, north of 23 Mile Road, west side of Mound. Conditional rezoning petition and site plan number 22-42. Sidwell number 23-07-17-478-017. Legal description is as follows. The Planning Commission will meet on Monday, January 9th, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the Shelby Municipal Building, 52700 Van Dyke, Shelby Township, Michigan, 5867267243, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the conditional rezoning application and site plan. The application for the conditional rezoning and site plan may be examined at the Planning and Zoning Department in the Municipal Building, Monday through Friday, from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM. Written comments may be submitted to the Planning Commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act 110 of 2006 as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffett Chair, Raquel Moore Secretary. This was published in the Shelby Utica News on December 21st, 2022. There were 35 property owners, two applicants, and nine utilities were notified by first-class mail on December 20th, 2022.
Well, thank you. Let me, let me just comment before- Let me just comment before, as enthralling as these meetings are, and everyone is more than welcome to stay and participate if you choose to, that if your item has been dispatched, you're more than welcome to.
Thank you so much.
No, Mrs. Missich, you cannot leave. Don't take it personal. It's me, it's me, it's always me.
(inaudible).
Okay. Mr. Kirk, did the publication meet all legal requirements?
Yes, it did.
Great, thank you. Did we receive any correspondence on this request?
Just the letter that was located in our package from Kutter Properties, Inc., that we all received prior to the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Format for the public hearing will be as follows. The petitioner or representative will be allowed to come up and state what they're requesting of this body, and their reasons for it. I'll then turn it to the commissioner just to ask any questions or make any comments, then open the floor to the public to ask any questions or comments, that I will record, and then bring the petitioner back up to answer those questions. With that, is the petitioner or representative here, or both or all?
Frank Salamoni, I'm the architect for the project.
Frank, could you make sure you speak into the, and you got to tell me what Mr. Luccheco's first name is.
It's McGailey.
McGailey, okay, thanks, yeah. You were smirking when I was asking the question, so I figure, okay, you got the answer.
My cousin with the same name, so. Frank Salamoni, 48701 Hayes Road, Shelby Township. I'm the architect for the project, and I'm here with Ms. Lochner, who's the owner of Happy Tales. She currently owns and operates a dog training facility in this location, with very little boarding at the time, or kennels at the time, and she wishes to build a new 54, 5500 square foot kennel building in the rear of the property, and she's here along with me to answer whatever questions you may have. I don't know if Kate wants to add anything with what we're proposing, but...
Sure. Well, do you want to start with questions, or do you want me to tell you a little bit more about what I want to do?
No, go ahead.
Okay, so, so yes, I bought the building six years ago, I've been running it as a dog training facility, and we are successful, and we're growing, and we are busy, and we need more space. So, just to clarify, the 54, 5500 square foot building that we want to build is not going to be for all kennels, we need more floor space to work with dogs, so, so part of that will just be open floor plan as well to work with dogs, and we are expanding our business to open the ability to do fitness with dogs too, so we're just, we need more space to work with what we're doing.
Okay. Is it all indoor, or will it be, you're expanding like sort of the outdoor space to work with?
Well, I mean, the only thing we really do outdoors, we take dogs for walks and stuff, and we potty them outside, but, but that's, I mean, we work outside, but we're not doing like, they're not like outdoors in a group setting, if that's what you're asking, is that what you're asking?
I just think if that aspect of it's going to expand, if there's going to be more, or they're going to be...
No, we do not do anything like traditional what you guys think, doggy daycare, we don't do anything like that with like dogs running around and stuff. Everything that we do in our building is completely one-on-one, so every time a trainer is going to go work a dog, they're going to go get the dog, work the dog, put the dog away, or we're working one-on-one with families, so it's never done in like, the only time that we ever do group classes, then we'll have more dogs on the property, but it's one dog, one owner, not like multiple dogs loose on the property, if that's what you're asking.
Okay. No plans to, you've got a nice, you've got a nice barrier to the property to the west, a stand of trees, and probably some wetland in there too.
It's actually a septic field.
Oh.
Is that, I believe it's active too, there's no storm on mound, I don't believe, or I mean, sanitary.
Sewer.
Behind us you're talking?
Yeah.
So, I don't know if it's a septic field, but I do know that we are not allowed to use that property, and we don't plan to do anything with that.
Initially, it was a septic field, I don't know if it's still active, I'm fairly certain it's still active, but...
Yeah, probably is, why would they, if it's active, why would they tap into it? That's a, that's a pretty significant expense. Although, that was built, when was that, when was that daycare put in?
1985.
Eighty-five?
I have the site plan not with me, the old site plan.
Yeah, so there wasn't sewer there in eighty-five, so there would have, it would have been a septic.
I do know when we did our, when we got our special use permit, part of the approval for it was that we would not use that land, because I know that there's residential behind us, so we will, we do not plan to do anything with that land.
If I'm not mistaken, I believe it's zoned residential, is it not?
That's correct.
It is zoned separately, yes.
Right, well, I'm just, I'm just trying to anticipate potential if that does get developed, that there maintains a buffer between, and there is a nice buffer that it...
It's her, it's her, it's part of her property.
Oh, so she has part of that, okay.
Yeah, there's an 80 by, I don't know how long it runs, but it's her property, it's just zoned residential, whereas the front portion is zoned C1 currently, and we're trying to get this to.
Okay, okay, so we're not rezoning that piece of it, so that's going to maintain, okay.
I don't know how that works.
Well, no, we would be rezoning that entire piece, because it's all one parcel, so it's split zoned, that parcel is split zoned, the parcel to, yeah, the west is...
Hmm? Let me, let me, let me weigh out our eternity to comment, comment.
So you're asking for a conditional rezoning?
Correct.
Under state law, we can't impose those conditions, so are your conditions, what, the use, is that correct?
Correct.
And this site plan, as it is, and then you also listed out some other conditions in your letter about ours.
I mean, do you have questions about those specifically?
No, you gave us four or five conditions in there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, just, I was looking at the conditions to the rezoning, and there were, I don't think ours were necessarily on there, but I do know that, you know, we had to agree to like certain conditions, like soundproofing in our kennel and things of that nature, so yes.
So those, so the conditional rezoning would be the use, the site plan, and these items listed here.
Correct.
Okay, maintaining that 80-foot belt.
The site plan would do it.
Okay, fine.
Mr. Kirk, Chairman?
Yes.
Those conditions are in our zoning ordinance, so for dog boarding in vet clinics, they would have to abide by those conditions for the type of use.
We'd also...
Under the C2 zoning ordinance.
What's the setback on, with the C2 on that use?
Well, it's not the setback on the use, but it's, you know, soundproofing, the building, all those conditions that are A, B, C on the second page of the review are all in the zoning ordinance.
Regarding the setback, though, that would be locked into the site plan they're locking into.
Correct.
And then we'll also need a rezoning agreement once we get to the board.
Okay. I'm fine with this, I drive by that site, my mother lives over there, so I know that area, I've known that area since I was a kid, so it's not, and it's, and actually, and it works well, because it's, you know, it's, I think you said, it's the Department of Roads owns that piece, but really, it's a drain, it's what it's been for, as long as I, you know, my old man dragged us out of here from Detroit, and then, but that nice, so it really kind of fits, and if you maintain that 80 feet behind you, that, I mean, it's kind of so perfect, so if that's locked in, I think this works out really well, so, all right. Any other comments or questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Meredith.
Yes, I live by a dog kennel, so I have some concerns about the sound, and they, I normally feed time, they wake you up in the morning, because I live real close, and I know. So, this sound dampening, what is that, insulation, what is this?
Well, I mean, you may know better, but like insulation for sure, they do make sound panels that help to do that, and so just to be clear too, I don't know where, which, you know, boarding place you live by, but we're definitely not looking to make this a lot bigger than what we already do. I also, this was a concern years ago, when we, when we bought the building six years ago, and we were trying to rezone it, sound was an issue, and the room is not full, obviously, but what I said six years ago was, I can guarantee that, I hate barking more than everybody in this room, and as controversial as it is, we do use bark collars in our facility, and we do, like our training facility, we are what's considered balanced trainers, which means we reward and praise good behavior, we correct bad behavior, so you could literally go to my building at any time, and I invite you to come any time during the day, and you could literally hear a pin drop. So, it is very quiet, and part of our training, you know, our training philosophy is creating calmness in dogs, and creating like a really calm, quiet environment, so it is like, you can't, you won't, you might hear a bark here and there, but the environment's very, very, very peaceful and very quiet. And we've never had a noise complaint in six years that we've been in that facility.
Right, I believe you too, but someday, you may not be there, and you may sell that to somebody else, and do we have any recourse in the future even, if this noise abatement, things like that come about, we have recourse?
We, I mean, we have ordinances, we have sound ordinances, so if it does...
That's our ordinance?
Yeah.
But does that apply to animals as well?
Yes.
Yep. And, you know, and currently, there's probably not a resident within maybe what, a thousand more, thousand feet?
Yeah, at least, apartment buildings north of that, right?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, and it's...
Current office complex right next to it, my chiropractor's in, and it goes on...
Right, so probably the closest house is on, across from mound, you know.
Good, thank you. Good luck.
All right. Any other comments or questions? All right, thank you. You can sit down for a second. This is the only public hearing, the Planning Commission will hold on this rezoning request. Remarks will be entered into the Record for Township Board Evaluation. The part, the Planning Commission is a recommending body. Ultimately, the Township Board will make the final decision considering our recommendation. At this time, anyone is free to ask any questions or offer a comment. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. Does the planner want to talk? Do you have any comments?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. So basically, what I just wanted to go over is some of the standards that are contained in our ordinance for these types of businesses. The one is the all operations shall be conducted completely within the enclosed building with which the applicant indicated that everything will be done inside. She already has an existing area to the north of the building that is already fenced in that she uses currently, that will not be expanded as well. The outdoor pens or runs shall be completely enclosed by a six-foot fence, which I described is, the areas within the building where the animals are boarded shall be sufficiently soundproofed to prevent disturbance or become a nuisance to surrounding properties as determined by the building department. The areas of the building where animals are boarded shall have a minimum of 10 air changes per hour. Animal isolation areas should have, shall have 100% fresh air with air exhausted and none returned to the ventilation system, and then public access areas shall be provided with a separate ventilation system from animal treatment and boarding areas. Areas for, used for animal boarding, isolation, and treatment shall be constructed of easily cleanable materials, and all areas of the animals are present, are present, shall be cleaned at a minimum twice daily to provide appropriate odor control and sanitation, and any pets boarded overnight shall be confined to the building from the hours of 9:00 PM to 7:00 AM, which Ms. Lochner has already addressed, and will abide by those requirements. As far as the master plan is concerned in this situation, I mean, it is master planned residential, however, the property is already zoned for office. The north side is also zoned C1 retail business, the south is also zoned C1 retail business, and just south of that is, is a shopping center, which is zoned commercial, C2. To the east is light manufacturing zoning, so I think this is more than appropriate, as long as we protect the neighborhood, you know, the residential neighborhood to the west, and as she indicated, she's going to preserve that natural buffer area. I don't have any issues or concerns with this rezoning request and the use of the expansion of our business.
Okay, thank you. Any final comments? Okay, thank you. Is your motion to close the public hearing?
Some of, support.
Moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Our recommendation this evening must be based on the following, the practicality of the rezoning request and the effect on the surrounding area, the owner's right to use their land, his or her land. Do current growth and development patterns warrant this rezoning, and is the proposed rezoning in accordance with the master plan? We may recommend approval, we may disapprove, or we can table this request evaluated further. At this point, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Moore.
I'd like to recommend approval to the Township Board for conditional rezoning and final site plan, special land use 22-42, for Catherine Lochner for Happy Tales Learning Center for Dogs, 51209 Mound Road, parcel number 23-07-17-478-017. Located north of 23 Mile Road, west side of mound, proposed dog boarding and training building addition based on the following. Number one, adequate access is available to the site from mound road. Number two, the training activities will bed, will be completely enclosed in the building. Number three, the established wooded area located on the western portion of the site shall be maintained as a natural buffer between the property and the single-family residential neighborhood to the west. Number four, the site plan, the site shall comply with all regulations in Section 4.30 of the zoning ordinance. Number five, the proposed rezoning use is not out of scale with the existing development pattern in this area of the township. Number six, a revised site plan is required, addressing all Planning Commission site plan and engineering review comments. And number seven, the proposed rezoning change would not adversely impact any abutting development.
Support.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Moore, I'd like to add on that, that it's restricted to this use and this site plan, and a conditional rezoning agreement will also be entered into.
Okay. And also, number eight, this is restricted to the use of the site plan as it stands...
In a conditional rezoning agreement?
In a conditional rezoning agreement. Thank you.
Okay, by the second or?
Support.
Okay. Moved by Moore, support by Snyder. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner LaRae?
Yes.
And the Chair of the Chaffs. Good luck.
Thank you.
You too. Election of the officers, seeing as we have a couple of members absent, we're going to kick that down the road until we get everybody here. Planning Directors report.
Chairman, during the months of, or the dates of May 15th through July 15th, we are going to be holding our Planning Commission meetings over at the library. They are going to be doing construction on our stairwells here, so we will not be able to use this building, therefore, we're going to be in the library. The meetings will be televised as normal, so we'll be meeting in there.
Should we do it around a fire pit, maybe? And give marshmallows?
(laughing).
What's that? Okay, I don't see anybody else.
Mr. Chair, move to adjourn.
Support.
Moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.